Good evening, everyone. It's 6:32 on April 4th, 2023. At 6:32, I will call the Air Shirley Regional School Committee to meet. And I need to announce that those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is also being audited and recorded by AKA AB and ASR State. Any audience members who wish to report any part of this meeting must inform the chair who will announce the recording. This is Detective Clark of Massachusetts Guard Task Center. The listing matters with those reasonably anticipated by your chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought into discussion due to existing legal law. I'm calling the meeting. Michelle.
Legions?
Oh, yep, okay. Can everyone stand for the Pledge of Legions, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am here.
Mrs. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Quinty?
Here.
Mrs. Reschutz?
Here.
Mr. Ruprecht?
Ms. Fan?
Here.
Okay, so we have a forum, so that gives us forum to the evening. I would like to turn the rest of the agenda over to Michelle Granger, Vice Chair of the Air Shirley School Committee.
Thank you, Joyce. We're happy to have you back remotely and can't wait till you're back with us in person. For those that don't know, Joyce had a serious accident, and she's feeling better and with us tonight, and we're grateful for that. So, thanks for coming back, Joyce, to start the meeting and to be here with us. So how do you guys want to handle? Do you want to move up? I mean, I know we have a showcase, but I don't know how long Kevin can stay on.
Well, I think that would depend on the school committee members and whether or not they could stay, but if we could... There's a few things to be voted on. The one thing that absolutely has to be voted on today is the SOI.
Okay.
So if you want to go out of order and just do that right now, then if anyone had to leave, we could manage, accept the warrant, it would be okay.
So Kevin, just, this is kind of more for you than anyone. We have a student showcase here tonight, which is the middle school theater group with their play Beauty and the Beast. But I know that you can't stay on very long, and I just want to make sure that if we move it up, like, you have to leave soon. Just want to confirm that.
Yeah, I'd say if I'd have to leave in the next 20, 30 minutes, probably the most.
Okay, all right. So if the audience will just indulge me, we are going to talk about ongoing business, item A, which is the approval of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority while we have all our members. As you can tell, this is kind of a skeleton crew tonight here, and we have some, our other members are online, but can't stay for the whole meeting. So we want to make sure that everyone that's available to participate in this conversation is present. So I'm going to move up to item 10A, approval of, to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the elementary school building project between April 10th and 14th, 2023. Dr. Renda.
We were able to go to the select board meetings in each town, both Shirley and in AIR. I believe Shirley was this past month on the 11th, AIR was the following week on the 18th. At this time, the Select Board in Shirley does not believe it is, would be physically responsible to participate in a SOI for a new building project. They did, however, express interest of us bringing that back once there are some bonds off of their books in five to seven years, if I'm not mistaken. Little different scenario in AIR. AIR Select Board did vote to support the submission of an SOI for a new building project.
Right.
Mr. Quinty, was that a decent summary?
Right on.
Yeah, I, you know, I was at both meetings as well, and I think what they said for Shirley was at least not until the middle school comes up, which I think is 2026.
I think the middle school, and is it possible the library's coming off or town hall? There's two, there's two bonds coming off soon.
2026 in the middle school and 2034 here.
Oh, okay.
That service is like 700, 800,000.
Okay, so they're considering the high school project as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I think, you know, we've attended many Boards of Selectmen's meetings in AIR for the last couple of years when we've presented our budget and have been asked, not just this year, but in past years as well, about submitting a statement of interest for an elementary school at Page Hilltop. So certainly, the town of AIR has expressed interest and most recently is saying that they're more, that they're, they're ready to go and would like us to submit. So I'll open it up to anyone on Zoom, or Jim, if you have any questions, comments.
I'd just like to reiterate that the, the current state of the elementary schools, there's nothing in either school that is slowing us down from presenting the programs that we've developed for the students. But, you know, when you go to do these kind of projects, a lot of, a lot of the things that happen here have to dovetail with the town's financial positions relative to what they've got going longer term. So right now, it looks like AIR is in a position that it looks like they feel this would fit well into what their long-range planning is. So I don't think that will be any problem, but the fact that something might be happening here doesn't mean that other things won't be happening. Dr. Renda, I talked about a number of things. We'll probably be talking more about upgrades that we can make in, in the lower way and possibly at Page Hilltop if we don't get chosen as we get further into that process. But right now, there's nothing that's stopping the delivery of the programs in either one of the elementary schools.
Important point. Kevin, Erica, Joyce.
No, I think this is important that we keep moving forward, my audience in our present shape.
I agree with Joyce.
Okay. Kevin, do you have anything you want to add?
I agree, I'm watching, but I don't have nothing to add. I also encourage you to record.
All right. Well, on that note, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the submission of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the elementary school project in AIR at Page Hilltop.
I'll second it.
Oh, wait a minute, hold on. There is certain language I have to, I have to read.
You want me to read it?
Yep.
Having convened an open meeting on Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Air Shirley Regional School District, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority a statement of interest form Friday, April 7th, 2023, for the Page Hilltop Elementary School located at 115 Washington Street, Air Mass. 01432, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which the application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with the state and approved local requirements. Our current academic and social-emotional program delivery and efficiency are badly constrained by obsolete facility issues and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Air Shirley Regional School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
All right. So does someone second that? Yep. Okay, so, thank you, Erica. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. It's going to be a roll call. I'm sorry.
It's going to be a roll call.
Michelle, we can call the roll.
Mr. Breznerhan?
Aye.
Mrs. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Quinty?
Aye.
Mrs. Reschutz?
Aye.
Ms. Fan?
Aye.
Very exciting. Hopefully, we'll get in the pipeline on the first try, but you never know.
We hope so.
And we thank you for doing all the work associated with it. I know that's a lot to do, but we're appreciative. Okay, so Erica, you're staying on, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right.
I'm staying on.
Okay, so there are some other things we're going to be voting on, but they're not as major as SOI, so I'm going to have the showcase come in now, and Kevin, if you want to stick around, otherwise, we'll, we'll talk to you next time. So we're going to go to the, go ahead.
And you have a forum without me?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll probably drop a little while. Thank you very much. I will just add, my daughter and a bunch of her friends love the play. It's definitely absolutely fantastic. So congratulations to them. They really thought it was one of the best things they've seen, so I just wanted to add that.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Okay. So our student showcase tonight is our middle school with Mr. Oerlik, the principal, and Mrs. Fletcher from the Middle School Band Music and Theater. They did a play Beauty and the Beast this past weekend, so is someone? Oh, there you are. Sorry, I didn't, I thought you were out there.
Hi. Good evening. Brian O'Leary, principal. So, yeah, tonight we have a cast of Beauty and the Beast along with their director, Mrs. Fletcher, and assistant directors, Mrs. Lyon and Ms. Pierce, coming to do kind of a victory lap after having done three performances this past weekend. The singing, you know, the choreography and the acting was fantastic. They did an amazing job, and, you know, they were full houses that they performed to. It was really fantastic to see how much of the community came out to support them. You know, families were extremely supportive. You know, it was great to see Dr. Renda and Mr. Cleary along with school committee members coming out. So they're going to be performing Be Our Guest and the finale to Beauty and the Beast. Hand it over to them.
Excellent.
I'm going to charge the gate door.
Huh? What?
I'm going to charge the gate door.
Oh, okay.
I love the singing.
Will you want to, do you want to stay over there so they can?
How are they setting up? Yeah. If you guys, if you guys want to set up in front of the camera, we'll move.
Yeah.
So that you can face that way.
That's going to sing. We can sort of probably look over here.
Do it, yeah, do that, that's fine.
So this is just, we have more in the wings for the next song. This is just a few of our students. We had 47 students involved total between stage crew and cast. So this is a few of them that can make it tonight. We're going to sing two songs for you. So. Ma chérie, mademoiselle, it is with deepest pride and greatest pleasure that we welcome you tonight. And now, invite you to relax. Let us pull up a chair as the dining room proudly presents your dinner. Be our guest, be our guest. Put our service to the test. Tie your napkin around your neck, chérie, and we'll provide the rest. Some de jour, hors d'oeuvres, when you only live to serve. Try the great stuff. It's delicious! Don't believe me? Ask the dishes. They can sing, they can dance. After all this, this is France. And the dinner here is never second best. Go on and fold your pen, you take a glass, and then you be our guest, be our guest, be our guest. Beef ragout, cheese souffle, pie and pudding au fond de lait. We'll prepare and serve a flair of culinary cabaret. You're one of them, and you're scared of the bacon, oh, dear. No one's gloomy or complaining while the flatware's entertained. We top jobs. I do tricks with my fellow candlesticks. And it's all a very case that you can have. Come on in, good door pass, you want your own free pass to be our guest. If you're stressed, it's fine dining we suggest. Be our guest, be our guest, be our guest. It's a guest, it's a guest, sinks alive, I'll be blessed. Wine's been poured and think the Lord, or that the napkin's freshly pressed. With dessert, your forte, and my dear, that's fine with me. While the cups do their soft shoeing, I'll be bubbling, I'll be brewing, I'll get warm and hot, and it sinks the house up. We want the company impressed. We've got a lot to do. Is it one lump or two for you, our guest? She's our guest. She's our guest. She's our guest. Be our guest, be our guest, be our guest. Be our guest, be our guest. Our comment is your request. It's been years since we've had anybody here, and we're obsessed with your meal, with your heat, yes, indeed, we do please. While the candlelight's still glowing, let us help you, we'll keep going. Course by course, one by one, till you shout, enough, I'm done. Then we'll sing you off to sing as you digest. Till you're broke, your feet are up, and now let's see, now be our guest, be our guest, be our guest. Please be our guest. Thank you! Certain as the sun, ah, rising in the east, tremble as old as time, strong as old as mine, beauty and the beast, ah. Tremble as old as time, strong as old as mine, beauty and the beast, ah. I just want to thank everybody who came out this weekend. We had well over, between the three shows, well over 1,000 tickets sold between the three shows, and we just wanted to thank everybody for their support to make this such a wonderful musical. It would, you know, the kids have been working so hard, and, you know, if there's no audience, then there's not much to perform for. So thank you for everyone who came out. Any questions or?
I think this is a clear message to Mr. Christie that we should be covering, and he's in a couple of years. He's got the right pass, so.
Absolutely.
There you go. Excellent.
You guys were excellent. I don't know if anyone in our virtual audience has anything they want to add? Sorry, this is so awkward.
It was actually super.
Yeah, you guys really did an excellent job. So you had three, three shows?
Three shows, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Are you tired of it?
No.
You're excellent, really, really excellent. So thank you for coming. Thank you to the families for bringing them tonight to share with us. This is by far the best part of our meeting, always. So we really appreciate you coming and sharing all your hard work with us. Thank you.
And feel free to dance through the halls on class change. That's okay, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Well played.
Thank you, guys. Great job.
So, musical, she's the show sponsors? She runs a tight shirt, huh? Yeah.
I know, right?
Welcome to our world.
All right, back to our normal meetings.
Right.
So I'm guessing Anna isn't here tonight?
I know Anna had a, I apologize, I know Anna had a sort of series of conflicts. So she was going to try to make it tonight, but clearly, unfortunately, something got in the way. Apologies.
No problem. Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. So is there anyone there for public comment? No. Actually, I should have done, opened that up before we did the SOI, but, oh, well. Okay, so now we'll move on to our consent agenda, which tonight will include the March 7th, 2023 regular session minutes for release, the March 15th, 2023 regular session minutes for release, a warrant memo which, hold on, includes accounts payable warrant, 1131, dated March 17th, 2023, for $2,467.27. Accounts payable warrant, 1132, dated March 17th, 2023, for $559,799.3. Payroll warrant, 20, dated March 24th, 2023, for $995,994.91. Payroll warrant, 20.1, dated March 24th, 2023, for $21,714.36. As well as approval of a donation of $3,000 for the Breznerhan, from the Breznerhan family for the Air Shirley Regional High School Fields Project to cover the cost of painting of the track, say the Janus Breznerhan Memorial Track, 500 of which was donated by Mr. Kevin Breznerhan, $500 of which was donated by Mr. Ben Breznerhan, and 2,000 of which was donated by Mrs. Sally Sloan. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Subook.
I made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, second.
That works. All right, roll call for all votes, right, Michelle, tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to do roll call for all votes because we have some remote participation, so, Michelle, we call the roll.
Mrs. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Quinty?
Aye.
Mrs. Reschutz?
Aye.
Ms. Fan?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So we're going to move on to new business. First item is the Air Shirley Regional High School. Benefits of a rotating schedule. Mr. Christie, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to get to talk to you a little bit about some of the benefits of a rotating schedule. Over the last two years, the scheduling committee here at the high school took a look at a few different models that were possibilities for us, and really, when we examined all the schedules side by side, back to back, the rotating schedule was one that kept coming up for us. And the reason why is there a number of benefits to it. So I know you have the, my memo in front of you, but I just want to highlight a few of the kind of key points of this. Probably the most important one for us is the, the shorter class periods will allow for increased detention during those time periods. It also allows for increased frequency of classes. So where now we're seeing classes on an every-other-day basis, the rotating schedule will allow for students to see their teachers on six of the seven days of the rotation. This will be especially important in classes like science and math, where we've noticed a significant drop-off in students' attention spans after about an hour, and loss of material when we have a break in between classes. Sometimes with the way that the schedule has fallen, students will go from seeing their, their teacher once during the week to not seeing them for another week, and that, that time span can unfortunately lead to a loss of some of the material which needs We've also seen with the schedule we currently have, students having recurrent absences in a single class, those primarily being at the beginning of the day or the end of the day. The beginning of the day can range for really any number of things, from students having illness, students having mental health challenges, to end of the day where certain sports teams will have a recurrence of, of missing a particular period, those being G or H periods. Additionally important is our students who require a half-day schedule. And so we do have some students that are in that situation, and if they're attending half-days only in the morning, they do not see their afternoon teachers, which puts them at a pretty significant disadvantage. These are our neediest students that really would benefit from seeing their teachers on a, on any basis at all, let alone a consistent basis. Time management, this really means that students now need to manage their time in order to see their classes, and frankly, this more closely aligns with what we see from college schedules. So it does have students having the, the one long block, which is important, but frankly, having every period as a long block is not necessarily as important. So students will, will understand that they see their teachers on a consistent basis, but will now really need to plan for when they're seeing their teachers. Students will also see their teachers at optimal learning times during the day. I'm a morning person, so I love 8:00 AM. That is my prime time to get in and learn. I know from talking to a number of our students, I think they have one eye open at 8:00 AM, and it's not their preferred learning time. And so sometimes, material can be missed during those early morning classes. We also see it directly after lunch hit, where students are still digesting their lunch, and there tends to be a little bit of a lag in attention. And maybe most importantly, the rotating proposed schedule, we have come to find out, is actually very closely aligned with what we see at the middle school. So this schedule would actually create a really nice transition from our eighth graders moving to ninth grade, where the, the change in schedule won't be that radical a shift for them anymore.
Could you speak just briefly to the, to your, your team that was involved in looking at different options and how you put that team together?
Sure. It's a great question. So over the past, I'm going to say it's two years, but realistically, it's actually three or four. We did have a bit of a break for COVID. We reached out to any faculty member that had any interest at all in being involved, and I think at our height, we were probably up at about 25 teachers. At our lowest, we probably dropped down to only as low as about 22 or 21 members. So this was a key issue for our faculty. They really were, were interested and excited to explore how we could operate a more efficient schedule in the high school. And I think fairly clearly after maybe the first year or two, we saw some of the limitations of the block schedule, and it became, it became kind of a key point for them to wish to explore.
Good. Really, between, you know, you and the teachers, that's the buy-in you're looking for, so if that's the way that the people want to move the run it, that's the way you kind of have to go. And I think that amount of study certainly supports everything that you're trying to do here.
And I'll be honest with you, after, after going through this, I certainly reflected on, on kind of my own process through this, and I could have done a better job on, on some of the steps along the way. I wish I'd brought students in earlier. I would like you to know I actually met with every ninth-grade student at the school.
Ooh, that's it, time's up.
Sorry, thank you. I met with every ninth-grade student in the school to listen to their feedback. I, I caught it a little late that we had surveyed every student in the school before this year, which meant that their voice was missing. So the, the committee has met, and one of the wonderful things about the proposed schedule is there's flexibility in it. So we've already created a separate Thursday schedule, which has a 20-minute block of time for advisory. It is just as easy to take that schedule and to allow us to have a week, a series of days where we can implement directed study calls during that time period, which I know students are looking for. So we could even start off the year by having a few of those sprinkled in and look to eliminate them if, if we need to. I certainly think this, this will make students feel more heard, more part of the process. And so it's something we are highly considering for the first part of the year. We just went through all course registration, grades nine, 10, and 11, not 12th grade because they won't be here. And we now have tallies for all of those courses at the high school. So we're starting to look at how we can fit all the pieces together to make this work.
Good.
Yeah, that was going to be my question about student input, because I know when you presented, you know, a couple months ago, there were some concerns, but it sounds like those have been addressed and...
To a degree, I think we'll continue to address them.
Right.
You know, I think student voice is important here. We want our students to feel heard, we want them to feel understood. And when we went on our listening tour with students, they're concerned about the, having an increase in homework, and despite the fact that the faculty has told them sort of repeatedly that they should expect less, I think they need to see it to believe it. I know I've said a few times, change is hard, and change really hits everyone in a different way, but I think one... But I think once students see the schedule and see the schedule with some study halls that are already built in for them, I think they're going to start to feel more relaxed. I think they're going to feel more at ease. So if we can give that to them at the beginning, that's certainly something I think that will be helpful.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the study hall? Would that just be what it is? A study hall where students would just have time to just work on homework? Or?
It absolutely could be. Again, there's flexibility within what we do there. In talking to the students, and to particularly the ninth-grade students, they were really looking for that dedicated time to work on homework. That was their biggest piece of input to me. And I did this with Ms. Quinn and Ms. Sweetland, who I know both can't be here tonight, but put in extraordinary efforts to help me solicit feedback from students. It really was concern about homework. So if we can provide that to students, that's absolutely something we're happy to do.
One thing I'll just put out there because I liked this particular thing about the Panther blocks was the ability of students to get extra help during that time. So I don't know if you are going to put in some study block time, if there could also be availability for students to meet then with teachers if they're struggling.
That's a great, great question. And yes, when we talk about directed study blocks, we would have flexibility which would allow students to go to specific teachers they need.
Great.
So yes, thank you. I apologize for not clarifying that earlier. But yes, if, say, a student was struggling in math, they could move into the math teacher to receive some directed support during that period of time.
Great. Anything else, Jim? Anything, you guys, any questions? Joyce, Erica, or is it Kevin? Okay.
I have a question. Remember, when you did the presentation last time, we were talking about the conversion from the integrated math into having the specific classes. Does this schedule allow you to make that conversion for students who have already had integrated math and are now transitioning to this new one? How does that work?
Thank you, Ms. Fan. That's actually, it's a great question. What you'll see in our program of studies is really two tracks right now. We have one track for students that are currently at the high school. We also have a separate track for students that are entering from eighth grade. So if students have been taking the IM sequence even up through eighth grade right now, they'll jump into high school at IM2. For students that have not taken the Integrated Math 1 at the middle school level, they're actually going to start next year on Algebra 1. So we're looking and facing that in as we have students come through the school.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joyce, any questions for Mr. Christie?
Yes, please. So I know I've been kind of on the sideline, but I haven't seen this schedule yet. Can I get something on it from you?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm happy to send that to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
I don't think sometimes you can understand these things too illiterately.
I think it's similar to what was in place before we went to the extended block schedule. So it's probably something you'd be familiar with, Joyce, if you saw it. But I'm sure they can get you something that will show it to you in writing. Okay, so if no other questions on the schedule, move on to dual enrollment, Mr. Christie.
Sure. Dual enrollment is a topic I'm really excited to talk about because it is something we're looking at actually expanding in the future. So this year, we have three students right now that are going through really our very dedicated dual enrollment program. And dual enrollment can look different depending on the model you're using. So we have three students right now that are taking the vast majority of their classes at a college, community college. And these are three extraordinary individuals. For those three students, two of them are taking 100% of their classes in a college or community college setting, and one student's actually choosing to take a class here, which has been fantastic. For these students, it has really been, it's a great way for them to earn advanced coursework at a discounted price. So for these students, they are getting head start on their collegiate career at a greatly reduced price. And it is an absolutely wonderful situation. We're looking to encourage students to continue taking classes. And so one of the things we do here is we offer a partnership with Mount Wachusett Community College, and that's for a course that we call Intro to Psychology. They call it PSY 105. We had 15 students take and receive this course for college credit. The setup of the courses is a little bit interesting in that we saw the professor in person about once every other week. And the vast majority of the work for students was asynchronous and online. Luckily, we run this directly parallel with our Sosh course, which is taught by Mr. Gubalini. And Mr. Gubalini, beyond his extraordinary skill in any number of areas, also helps the students with part of their psych learning when the professor's not able to be here. So that's been wonderful for us. One of the things that we're going to continue to look into is to provide more opportunities for students to take courses here during the day. I think for the three students we've had that have ventured outside of the school, it's been phenomenal. But it provides a unique opportunity in that those students need to be able to have transportation, to be able to get to whatever school they're looking at going to. We're really looking at ways of providing our current staff with opportunities to teach college courses here. And so that's something that we're continuing to look into. We had applied for an early college grant, which unfortunately, we did not receive. But we will continue to look into those possibilities. And we're dedicated to bringing more courses in here so that students can begin to get college coursework while still in high school.
Can you speak to what schools the three students are at? And you mentioned college and community college, so I'm assuming it's more than just Mount Wachusett?
It is. So Mount Wachusett is one. Framing Camp State, I believe, is another. And those tend to be too big.
And Pittsburgh State.
Pittsburgh State, yes, thank you.
So is this something those students sought out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so we, both our school counselors talk to students about a series of opportunities that are open to them. And we do have some students that are really looking, by the time they're juniors or seniors in high school, at exploring coursework beyond what we offer. And the work that they've found has been incredible. My first year here, we had a student receive their associate's degree the weekend before they graduated from high school. So that set that student up already for two years of college coursework, which they could cross off immediately. And it was a two-year cycle in college for them to graduate. We are also very fortunate that that person has come back and continues to do some work in the district, which has been fantastic. And it's actually something we're really looking at now, which is recruiting our college seniors to try to, if they're going into education or any field we may be able to support, to encourage them to come back here to do their practicum hours, which is their student intern hours with us. We will be, I hope, working with a very recent graduate on a potential opportunity that I'm hopeful I will have more information and be able to come back and talk to you about a little later on this spring.
Great. Maybe that student that's here in the district could talk to her, some of the existing students here, about how she got involved with the dual enrollment and what benefits she saw. I don't know if you have any, if there's any opportunity for that, but it might be nice hearing from a student that did it and how it helped.
Absolutely. And I think when we talk about the students right now that are going through, and I'll disclose that they are three amazing young women that have really sought out these experiences on their own, that have a path and are extremely driven. We do hope that they talk to our younger students. I think that this is, it's a great opportunity for us to bring those students in as students are now starting to register for courses, to talk to some of our younger students about the path they sought and how they can replicate it.
Because they may not even know it's an option, even though, you know, they hear it. They might just tune out an adult, but maybe if a peer or a recent graduate talks to them, it may sink in a little more.
I agree. And it really is a testament to the students that have gone through this and the work they've put in on what a success it can be, both in terms of the work itself and also that some of the financial burden they can take off themselves when looking beyond. But thank you, that's a great suggestion, and absolutely one we'll take up.
Jim?
Outside of getting the course credit, I mean, that is an important thing, A, to get the credits, but also, B, to, if you get certain required courses out of the way, you could take things that are much more challenging and much more aligned with what you want to do. So if there's a way to do that earlier, usually better off. I know in Sierra's case, probably the greatest benefit was seeing what the college world looks like at that level and seeing the myriad of people that are in a college classroom not so disalerted from what they see in high school. One area of opportunity, I think, I think if, in Sierra's particular field of study, I think if we had the option here, not for next year, which is something to think about with your fellow administrators, to do directed study with some of the teachers here because, I mean, you have some really highly pedigree people in this building. And I think somebody doing directed study, I mean, they could really challenge them and get them down a path, whether you get college credit or don't get college credit. But I think, you know, in a particular field, I think we could do a lot with that. And that would enable them to stay. My personal opinion, I like to keep them here for four years. There's a whole vibe that goes with that. Some people really thrive outside, that's okay. But overall, I'd rather keep them in here. And if we can take certain people who have maxed out in their field of study here, in one of the sciences, and say, "Look, you're senior, you can do directed study with this person up this line." I think that would be very beneficial for the student. And I think the teacher would probably love to do something like that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Quinty. You're actually bringing up one thing that we have a number of staff members doing, which is taking an independent study. So I know I mentioned Mr. Gubalini a little bit earlier. We've had students that have been interested in pursuing a pre-law cycle. And Mr. Gubalini has worked independently with a number of students to give that option to them as a bar-certified lawyer. It's rare that any high school has that knowledge base at their fingertips. And he's been incredible at working with our students and getting them to see his passion for the law and his understanding of the future that could be in store for some of our youngsters. So absolutely, completely agree.
Erica, Joyce, any questions on dual enrollment?
Yeah, so dual enrollment and, like you said, someone who's going for something academic. And I'm assuming that those would be certified schools that would be organized. And people who have, we had a situation a number of years ago where a girl was going to become a professional ballerina. And she was going to Boston two, three times a week and really early to do that. And that's what she became, was a professional ballerina. So how much study, how much analyzing are we going to need to do for situations like that?
It's a great question. I really think, one of the things that the school has always done well is take a look at students' individual needs and really try to personalize the educational experience for those students. I got to tell you, I would love it if we had a student that was in training to become a professional ballerina. I can talk to you a little bit about what we do have for next year, which is we have a student who's going into their senior year who's really interested in pursuing a career in Parks and Rec. Thankfully, we have one of the best in town, in Mr. Thomas, who's agreed to take this student on as part of an internship. And so we've worked with the student, we've worked with the student's family to set up a schedule. And in this student's case, it couldn't be better in that with the rotation of the schedule, the student will get to see the intricacies of the job from the time they arrive until the time they leave. We're setting this student up with a series of opportunities to lead teams, volunteers to help out with projects around town. And again, I can't thank Mr. Thomas and the Parks and Rec Department enough for this. For this young person, we know that this is an area of extreme interest. We know that this is a potential career that the student may want to get into. And whether the student loves the experience or hates the experience, either way, the student will have a better understanding by the end of this year what the job entails and really what they're looking for.
That's great.
Mr. Christie, I've been asked a series of questions, so I'm trying to make it concise. So one of the things that was asked is, how does a student go about, what are the steps that students need to take in order to show interest?
Great question. To me, that probably starts with a question with our school counseling department. I've had students book meetings with me. Really, either way, we try to talk to the student about specifically what they're looking for. At times, the student may not know the exact field, but they'll have a series of interests or a series of strengths, which they really key in on. And we try to work with the student on what might be possible fields for those areas of strength. So I know both counselors use a program called Naviance. And Naviance helps students to identify that there are really areas of strength and the areas of a potential job they may not like. And when we can sit down with students and really discuss these possible future endeavors, we start to come up with plans. And the plans have been fairly wide-ranging at times on what we can offer. And we do look to be expanding the number of opportunities we can offer our young people within the communities of Air and Shirley. I can tell you one thing that's also on my mind are ways in which these students can give back to their communities. Because both towns, I think, have done a really great job supporting our youngsters all along. And I know a number of them are looking for ways in which they can help their towns and systems back out.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Christie. Kind of segue into the second question because I'm only going to do the second question. So if we had an example of a student who wanted to be a traveling nurse, the question is, is that something that they would still be able to do, you know, through dual enrollment? Dual enrollment, I'm sorry. Is that possible with a track like that?
So that's probably not as much dual enrollment as it would be an internship opportunity or an externship opportunity. We did actually have one student who showed an extreme interest in nursing. We talked with the folks at the local nursing home and really tried to arrange a way in which this student could start to see some of the details of the job. Unfortunately, they were really looking for more of getting coffee ready, making staples, rather than the details of nursing itself. So we are continuing to look for folks that would be willing to host students in those roles. I can tell you, if we had someone that was willing to have students shadow them as a visiting nurse, that would be wonderful for us. And so we're starting to look into how we can make the connections within the two towns to find those opportunities for students, to find those connection points in the specific people that are willing to help out our youngsters as they look for possible career tracks.
Thank you, Mr. Christie.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions before we move on to the mentoring program? All right, this is one I asked specifically for because I didn't realize it was happening. And when Anna mentioned it, I thought it was fantastic. So if you could just tell us a little bit about the peer mentoring program at the high school?
So given the nature of the inquiry, I figured, and since I was here for the meeting with Anna, I figured it'd be helpful to provide a little bit more context than just the high school because this is district-wide.
Oh, yeah.
It's cutting across the high school and the middle school. So I figured, at least I could speak to that, and Spencer can speak to the specifics at the high school, if that's okay.
Yeah, of course.
So our goal all along has been to kind of increase belonging. It's been a goal for the district for a long time. And ultimately, the strongest way to do this is to really make the connections student-to-student. And so we had talked about this, Spencer, me, and Principal Ulrich had spoken about this back in 2020. and Principal Ulrich had spoken about this back in 2020. And unfortunately, COVID a little bit got in the way there to implement. And so we rekindled that conversation last year to talk about kind of a student mentoring program. And we spoke to a provider from the outside. The company's name is Core Trainings. They're out of Nashua, a local company. The founder and the lead trainer is Deb Holt, and she's done student mentoring across the country. She's done this work in colleges, universities, high schools, and middle schools for the past several years. In fact, she's the lead trainer that the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association uses for captains workshops, and we've sent students to those over the past five years. I've had the privilege of working with Deb in my previous two high schools implementing mentoring programs, and she is phenomenal. And the work that she's done, so when we had a conversation with Principal Christie and Principal Ulrich, and they met Deb, and we had this conversation about the mentoring program, everybody was on board with implementing. And so as part of that work, I remember even that meeting that Principal Christie had said, when can we start? Because we wanted to get this going literally up off the ground. And so from that moment forward, they solicited, in each of the schools, they solicited nominations from staff, they solicited student interest, they went through kind of a process to identify students. The goal is to identify, and a lot of folks, when they think about mentoring programs, think about students, like, we're just looking for a certain group of kids. In a mentoring program, you're looking for every kid. You're looking for connectors. And so that's a cross-section of your school. So it's not just students who are just involved in athletics, or just involved in performing arts, or just involved in academics. It's every kid, so that they can connect with the kids that are coming in. And so the student mentors went through in-person trainings, and that took place over the summer in preparation for orientation days for ninth graders coming into the high school, as well as for sixth graders coming into the middle school. So students were much more involved in that transition process for kids. And then, over a monthly basis, there's trainings that take place provided by Core Trainings for our student mentors in both schools. And then those students go into the advisory periods to facilitate lessons and discussions with the kids that they're mentoring. So we've been really pleased with the mentoring program for this past year. We're looking forward to continuing its implementation and make it a little bit more student-centered and sustainable. In the first year of implementation, it's always very adult-heavy, kind of working on moving the kids, training the kids, and so on. And the goal is, over a period of time, that you build a student leadership group that essentially runs your mentoring program, which then runs your orientation program for your kids. But I wanted to give Principal Christie an opportunity to highlight some of the specifics of the high school that I may not have included in the overview for the district.
That was perfect, Mr. Caleri. You really did a wonderful job of kind of highlighting why we started the program and how we're looking for it to continue. The important point that Mr. Caleri highlighted for you was the cross-section of the population. We really wanted a diverse group of mentors to come in and make connections to students. I think we noticed, certainly over the pandemic and post-pandemic, that there was a disconnect with students coming into the high school and feeling at home. I know in previous districts I've been in, there was the phrase, honor thy senior. We really wanted that to go away and it, to become welcome by freshmen. We wanted the students, as they come into school, to feel like they're a part of, of our Panther Nation, to feel like they're a part of us, and to have someone that's an upperclassman that they could connect to. So this year, we, we polled all our staff. We had a wonderful list of students selected as potential mentors, had a series of meetings with them. And then ultimately, we wound up with 19 wonderful, amazing juniors and seniors here. We are very much hoping our juniors decide to continue with it next year. And for our seniors, they've done an unbelievable job of helping our incoming students to feel at home, to feel connected, and to really guide them through the, the intricacies of school. I think one of the hardest things can be walking into a building, not understanding the culture. And these students are here to meet with them, to get to know them, and to help them feel at home, to help them feel like they are a part of us, and that they are, they are here for the next four years to lead us to greater futures.
Do they meet with, like, say, a student moves in, if they're a sophomore or a junior, would they also meet with them and, as opposed to just?
Great question. Yes, and both Mrs. Kendall and Mr. Mulanzen this year started a group for students that move in mid-year. So one of the things we've noticed is, it's very difficult to start a school at the beginning of the year as a new student. It's even harder to start the school partway through the year when friend groups have already formed and, and people know their teachers and relationships have been made. So that group specifically was meant to form connections with people who are having this unique experience of moving into a school mid-year and trying to make connections with each other, for a shared understanding of that experience. And this is a group that will continue to happen each year. I really, I can't thank both of them enough for recognizing that we had this gap, which we really could use to fill. And they've done an absolutely unbelievable job of helping to make those students feel at home, feel connected, and yes, to, to join in with not only our student mentors, but also to join in with each other, to, to form their own unique cohort.
Yeah, it's important. I mean, we live in small communities, and these kids have been going to school together, most of them, since they were kindergartners. So for someone new coming in, it's pretty daunting, because the class sizes are small and, you know, it's tough. Jim, did you have any questions about?
All good.
I'm sorry?
All good.
Good. Joyce or Erica, any comments, questions about peer mentoring?
No.
Joyce? Guess not. Well, thank you for indulging me in that. I really wanted to hear more about it, so I appreciate you telling us about it. It sounded intriguing. I love the idea of it, and I'm glad it's happening at the middle school as well, so those kids can continue when they...
And we are starting to solicit for next year.
Good.
So our current sophomores, who will be juniors next year, and even our current juniors, if they haven't already been selected, we're already starting to find another group. We want this program to keep growing. Keep showing how great we can be to all the students that are coming in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
All right. So next up will be the approval of new grants received as of March 31st, 2023. Dr. Renda?
All right, we have four new grants. I'll go through the list, and then Mr. Caleri will talk more in depth about a couple of them. But we received FC 185 DESI High Quality Instructional Materials Implementation Grant for $56,000. This is, was awarded on February 7th. It's a competitive grant to support the implementation of our Eureka Math curriculum. We also received a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, a school zone safety sign. There is no cost associated with this grant, but they will actually be providing the school zone sign with, I believe, there's a radar on it for the, for the speed.
Radar, radar.
This was awarded on March 20th. It's a competitive grant to replace, replace the speed sub-sign. So this one, the school district wrote, but it's important to note that Shirley's DPW also wrote a grant and received this also. So each, each town will be receiving.
Oh, okay. So this is for the AR. I knew, I had seen that Shirley had gotten one.
I believe this is for, right, Jay wrote the AR and Shirley wrote their own, and they both, they've both got it.
For the TP, do you have a chance to do the install?
We believe so. We're working, Mr. Briggs is currently working with the DPW and both...
Yeah, these are in addition to the ones we have. They just flash the 20.
Right.
And it'd be installed by the, installed by the DPW.
Okay.
That's great. So they're going to show my speed?
Yes.
Oh, no.
Be careful.
Yep.
Slow down. All right.
We also received FC 7Y9/730 from DESI. It's an Accelerating Literacy HQIM Grant for $200,000. This was awarded on March 15th. It's a competitive grant to support the implementation of a new ELA curriculum. And we received a 1-8 Foundation for Project Lead the Way grant, Gateway Grant for $45,000 for the middle school. This was awarded on March 31st. It's a competitive grant to support the gateway of Project Lead the Way programming at the middle school. Mr. Caleri will be able to tell you more about that. And we also received the Project Lead the Way Grant for $8,000 for the high school. Again, this is a competitive grant to support computer science programming at the high school.
So you might remember from last year, I think we had a showcase here. Phil Moore brought his kids in here.
Yeah.
And they did a computer app, and they showed you some of that. So a lot of the computer science work that we're doing here is, the curriculum is designed by Project Lead the Way, which is affiliated with WPI. There's a lot of training, support for staff, and so on. So we're looking to continue to expand that program at the high school. So one of the ways to do that, Phil had put together a grant for himself, ultimately to continue his adding additional courses and additional pieces to the Project Lead the Way Computer Science Program here. And then we had spoken to our computer science teacher at the middle school and talked about how we can, the real way to expand computer science options at the high school is to put in a gateway program. And so that's what we are doing. So the intent is to add over, this 1-8 grant for the middle school for $45,000 is actually a three-year award. And so the implementation process is going to be over a three-year period, where it's going to involve teacher training and the implementation of courses for grade six, for grade seven, and for grade eight. There's a engineering design course, a computer app course, a robotics course. I think those are the three. And that represents the gateway, so that will change essentially the course curriculum for grade six, seven, and eight. So we're super excited about this.
Yeah, that's excellent.
We're also in the mix for another competitive grant that is linked to this, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to announce that at some other time. The two others in here about high-quality materials, I've mentioned this, I think, at two previous school committees about literacy programming in the elementary grades and in the middle school. And the goal was, we were looking to apply for grants to update, to make sure we're aligned with the science of reading. So we did receive a grant, which was a huge step forward for us. So we're actually going through a process next Monday. We've been doing a lot of work all along, hoping that we were getting the grant. And we're doing some work next Monday with staff to review different curriculum materials to kind of narrow our list down to a smaller number, so that we can actually make a selection by the end of the year, implement for the start of next school year. So hoping to come back to talk about that. The High Quality Instructional Materials Grant for Eureka Math, I think several years ago during the COVID year, we presented kind of the implementation of Eureka Math, and we've been doing that for the past several years. And each year, we have managed to procure a grant to secure the funding to keep this program moving. This one is largely to support professional development and staff development and curriculum development for the program. It's not really to support the materials. And then, provided that we meet the requirements of this one, we will be in a very strong competitive situation to receive an additional grant for approximately 150% more going into the next year.
Wow.
So this is, this is all good. Like, we're happy about all this.
Do you happen to know who the 1-8 Foundation is?
They're an organization that's affiliated with Project Lead the Way. And so we actually had a fun interview with them on the snow day. They did their grant interviews with us virtually. So Phil and Principal Christie had their interview before, and then me, Brian Ulrich, Jay Mooney had the next interview. We had this whole conversation with them. Essentially, their, their organization is responsible for implementation of Project Lead the Way across the state. So that's what I know about them.
Are they Massachusetts-based?
Yes.
They are?
Yep.
So can I just ask, this is our first year with Mr. Mooney, are these things all new to us? Things we wouldn't have already received? Or I'm just curious what?
Four of the five are new.
Yeah. Things we would not have done on our own, necessarily?
We would have been trying, but we wouldn't have been nearly as successful.
Right.
Because the amount of time that it takes to do these grants, like, I'll say, for me personally, when I work with Jay on these grants, it's literally, I say, okay, put together the Google Doc, let's create the Google Doc. He'll say, okay, can you work on this question and this question? Because he may not know the specifics of what the impacts are in the school. So I will share with him school data, and whatever the information is, or find the right person to put in contact with him. He puts the whole thing together. And then he'll run it through with us, and we'll go through it all again. And then we submit him, and off we go. Whereas without him, this has been, it's been challenging. Not gonna lie.
So we're lucky.
We are.
Yeah.
Very fortunate.
I'm glad to hear that that's been successful.
If we're writing it, it's, it's taking away from something else.
Well, yeah, exactly.
So it's, he's cooking the meal, and we just have to eat it. Whereas in the past, we're cooking and eating, right? So it's a lot better just to eat, right?
Yeah, especially if it's good.
I hope that works.
It works now.
Be our guest.
Yeah, be our guest. Keep it on the theme, Bill.
I was trying to say on theme.
Love it.
Want to start singing it?
Erica, Joyce, any questions about these before we move to accept them?
Now, thank you very much.
No, I'm all set too, but I do want to say thank you to Grant Ryan. I do have a little bit of experience, so I appreciate the hard work and time that goes into it. So thank you very much.
Great. All right. Well, I will entertain a motion to approve the new grants received as of March 31st, as discussed this evening.
Make a motion to accept the grants as they were presented tonight?
Second.
Second.
Give it to Erica. Jim already got one.
Erica.
Okay, so roll call, Michelle, please.
Mrs. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Quinte?
Aye.
Mrs. Reschutz?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Great. All right. So finally, for new business is the request to update the 2022-2023 school committee meeting schedule. Dr. Renda?
Thank you. So this has come up a few times, and we've actually received notification from the Secretary Galvin's office about their, their desire for us not to hold meetings, public meetings during days of elections. And that actually is attached. You should have a copy of that in your packet. This one is dated in 2006, but they, I believe they send this out every year. This is just the one we happen to have handy. But a discussion took place, I believe it was the May 2nd. No, excuse me, it wasn't the May 2nd. That's the, the meeting we're looking to change. In a recent school committee meeting, there is an election on Tuesday, May 2nd, and I am asking the school committee to consider changing that date to Wednesday, May 3rd, so that the school committee meeting is not taking place on the same time as local elections. If the school committee so chooses, there would still be four meetings remaining, one being Wednesday, May 3rd, which was rescheduled from May 2nd, Wednesday, May 17th, Tuesday, June 6th, and the last meeting of the year would be Wednesday, June 21st.
So that would be for this year?
That's for this year.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I was thinking it was for next year. That's fine with me.
It's a single day at the, actually, Michelle Tastanari is still in Secretary Galvin's office, so she's a long-term employee there. And Mr. Olkey, the town clerk, had discussions with her, and she's still chapter and verse with what's on, on the document in front of you.
Joyce or Erica, any issue with moving the May 2nd meeting to May 3rd?
I know this was, this was the recommendation of the state in 2006, and that's before we had pre-voting, mail-in voting, and a few other things. So there's less emphasis now on voting day than there used to be. I just like consistency at school committee meetings, so that way it knows when they are. And if Jim can speak into his microphone, I can barely hear.
Oh, yeah, the microphone is kind of in between us, so. Is that a microphone? I looked for it. Both of them?
Could be both, yeah, could be both. Yeah, I think, I mean, moving it one day, I don't really see a problem with the general public right now. We have a lot of empty seats. I don't know how many people online are watching, but I think overall, it won't be anything here. And that would enable me to stand outside the Shirley Town Hall on May 2nd and hold up a vote for Joyce sign. I'd hate to miss that opportunity.
We're gonna expect to see you there now.
There you go. I'll be ready.
Joyce, Jim?
I'm sorry, Jim, I still can't really hear you.
He's hoping to hold a vote for Joyce sign on the 2nd, so wants to be able to do that at town hall.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we need to vote on this. So I will entertain a motion to move our May 2nd school committee meeting to May 3rd, still at 6:30, still at the high school LGI room.
So moved.
Oh, I think we have the floating day, right?
2nd, anyone?
Was it in there?
2nd.
2nd.
Thank you. Roll call, Michelle.
Mrs. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Quinty?
Aye.
Mrs. Reschutz?
Aye.
Ms. Fan?
Aye. No, aye.
All right. So, we're going to move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Renda.
Just to clear, we'll start off.
Ken?
How's that?
Sure, that's great. In the spirit of March Madness, I wanted to give you an update on the March Book Madness Tournament. So, over the past several years, one of our teachers at Page Hilltop, second-grade teacher, Sue Riley, she's participated in this tournament with her kiddos and some of her colleagues at grade two as a way to promote excitement around literacy. This year, with some assistance from our K-2 literacy coach, that's Leah Carter, and our innovation coach, Kristen Mayo, we were able to spread this tournament through all the grades, preschool to grade five. So, every classroom was participating in this. Kristen created interactive slides that allowed teachers and students to access all the texts virtually. Teachers at each grade level, they selected 16 books from a collated collection of 23 titles. And this tournament that they participate in is international, so folks from North America, Central America, Africa, and Asia participate in this. And it includes a diverse collection of titles each year that ultimately serve as mirrors and windows for our kiddos. And teachers at each grade level, they chose at least eight titles to read over the four weeks of March, and they created these visual brackets which were posted outside of each classroom. And many teachers chose the 16 titles to actually create a bigger bracket, but some only chose eight, which is absolutely fine. Students then voted each week on their favorite titles, which then essentially advances them to the next round of the tournament. And the final winners, we still have not heard yet, so we're going to hear those this Friday. And our participant, through the participation in the tournament, we were able to add additional copies, because this is one of our goals, was to diversify the classroom libraries. So, each of these texts that we were able to purchase for this tournament, we've also kind of put into the classroom libraries. That'll be permanent part of the collection for them. So, it's been, it was an awesome, awesome experience. I can't thank the teachers for their participation enough and for administration for their support, and especially for all the background work that Leah and Kristen did to kind of really get this going.
Great. With some little parallels to...
Yeah.
Yep, our own version.
Great.
So, moving on, for district updates, the school districts using a weighted vote system. There was a request by Mr. Quinty, I believe it was at the last school committee meeting, for us to reach out to Mars to see if they could provide us a list of schools who have used using weighted votes, school districts, excuse me, the number of their members and the value of their votes. We have reached out. Mr. Hemmings is on a well-earned vacation, but I'm sure as soon as he's back, he will get back to me, and hopefully, we can report that number out to you during the next, during the next meeting.
Yeah, I thought, I thought I might go to the Board of Selectment meeting, just to let them know what's going on. I mean, this, this will be a change from what we've been doing, and I'd like to, like, sort of ease into that. So, I just want to let them know that this is, just to see in the background of what was in, in Mac Reed's presentation and where we are right now, so they know there's, you know, Phil coming in 11.
Yeah, I think, fair enough. It is a rather major change. So, to preview that, I think would be helpful to everybody, including me, so, thank you.
Do you think that maybe that's a presentation you should be delivering?
We absolutely could.
I'd just prefer it come from the school district.
Sure, I could reach out to both Mr. McGovern and Mr. Propriandin, see if they can get us on. We will be presenting actually to the FinCom in Shirley at some point. It was supposed to be tonight, that got canceled, so maybe we can do that at the same time.
I don't know when FinCom meets.
Do you know your type?
I don't, Selectment is Mondays at 6:00. I don't know when the FinCom is on.
We do have some college acceptance updates. So, students are starting to get their letters into the guidance office. Boston University?
Who's in the Frozen Four, by the way, just wanted to add that.
Yes.
Will be in Tampa.
You're going to Tampa?
It's unfortunate.
Northeastern University, Rochester Institute of Technology, Stevens Institute of Technology, and Worcester Polytech Institute.
Nice.
Yeah, they're like some great, great schools.
Yeah. Very impressive.
Lots of science, yeah, fantastic. We hope that they keep coming in. And we do have a sports update submitted by Mr. Kendall. I will do my best, Joyce, to live up to Steve's delivery of this, but I'm sure that I won't. So, let's get started. The spring sports season has started. All teams have either had a game or will be having a competition soon. The girls' golf team has 12 participants, 11 from Air Shirley and one from Grant Dunstable. They played their second match today and have home matches at Grant Country Club. The boys' volleyball team has 11 participants. They too played their second match this afternoon. The first home match is Wednesday at either the high school or the middle school, pending the high school gym repair. Do we know what about that?
Yes, we got authorization for occupancy today.
That's excellent.
Yes.
Great news.
Well, temporary is better than...
Till we get the new panels in.
Yeah, well, that's...
Best news of the night.
Yeah, are they looking at re-engineering the system?
They may have to.
Yeah, really, I mean...
They may have to go to like a solid panel?
Yeah.
And then, like, the yellow pink ones, every other one or something like that?
Well, even the framing system that goes with, I mean, the whole, the whole thing.
The framing and...
Yeah, yeah, and you're trying to retrofit something that hasn't been produced in 60 years.
Yeah.
You know, I think you take a look at the opening, you go like, "Let's just do this one time," and say...
Yeah, do it right.
"I don't want to make stuff one time to fit something so I can see the same thing in like three or four years." I think that particular area is going to be susceptible to failure, and I think we should take a look at biting the bullet and say, "Look, the whole, the mounting system and panel system needs to be something that's new and currently produced on a regular basis." So, you can look in the catalog and get what you need, but I think we have to explore that. I know we'll, we'll be looking for ways to spend whatever money we have this summer. We have a break, so I think that would be a good place if we could engage our architects to take a look at that and say, "Look, we want to, we want to take the system out and put in a new system to cover that." It probably should have happened when we did the school, but here we are anyway. So, now, it's presented itself to us, and I think we should take the long-term fix.
Is that work that we might be able to do this summer?
The lead times are supposed to be very long for those types of panels. So, I think we have time, but we want to talk about the framing, make sure that that's really sturdy framing for that whole wall.
Right, right, because you might be, you might find out that for what they're trying to do, there might be a long lead time, but for a thing that, things that are currently in use...
Right.
It's, it's in a warehouse now.
Could shorten it up.
Because it's used other places, you know?
Well, that's great.
That's great news. So, moving back to the sports report.
There you go.
Boys' baseball and softball opened its season on the renovated Baseball and Rita Briggs Memorial Softball Field this afternoon against Maynard. JV teams open up on Friday with the home games against Toronto. Middle school softball and baseball play next Thursday against Quabin at Peroni Park. Girls' lacrosse, which we co-op with Grant Dunstable, has played two games and will likely host a game here at home Tuesday night. Plans are still pending. Boys' lacrosse co-op with Lunenburg is also getting started. Track and field opens the Janice Breznerhand Memorial Track this Thursday against Air Gansett. Unified track started yesterday with 14 participants. Coaches Chad Lynchruth and Emily de Blasio's team will host Marlboro on the Janice Breznerhand Track on April 25th at 3:30. Our girls' flag football club team has started practicing. We are part of a pilot program through the New England Patriots and seven other schools. The schedule is pending, but we expect to host at Norton Field and possibly play the postseason tournament at Gillette Stadium. We will be receiving a $5,000 grant from the Patriots for the program, along with the necessary equipment and uniforms. Thank you to the New England Patriots Charitable Foundation and volunteer coach John Lemieux.
That's fantastic.
Isn't that great?
Yeah.
That is all for the sports report and the superintendent's report.
I love seeing the new sports and the numbers. I mean, that's fantastic for first seasons to have the numbers that we have. 11 from Air Shirley for golf. That's wonderful.
Isn't that great?
I'm glad that worked out. Erica or Joyce or Jim, anything, comments on the superintendent's report?
Fantastic. The sports are accurate.
Do you happen to, do you happen to know the breakdown of the students for lacrosse?
I don't.
Okay. I'm just, I want to be sure that Mr. Kendall's buying lacrosse sticks so we can compel PE classes to play with lacrosse sticks, so maybe we can sort of jump into that, because everybody likes to play catch with lacrosse sticks.
You know, another note there, I know for a fact, there is a lefty set on that golf on the, for the girls' golf team.
Lefty lacrosse.
That is the first time that they're hitting straight golf balls. I'm positive of that.
You broke them in, right?
That's right. I took all the crooked shots out, there's only straight shots left in his clubs.
You stayed on the right side of the ball, man.
Heck, that might be the problem. And that is all, that's all for the superintendent's report.
All right, fantastic. Okay, so, we're going to move on to ongoing business. We already, we already addressed item A, so item B is the approval of the 2023-2024 school year calendar. Dr. Renda.
So, not really many changes from the last time that you saw that. You will notice that there is still currently one half-day on the last day of school. The reason that is in there, it's actually in the teacher's contract, that the last day of school will be a half-day. Essentially, that will mean we'll be serving brunch that day. But, we plan on working with ASRIA to solve that problem going forward, and we have spoken, they're very open to that. But, as of now, we need to leave that in. And then, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is, there is a possibility that we may be coming to the school committee to ask for a change. We will be implementing, hopefully implementing, a new literacy program come this fall, and we may be looking to add an additional Professional Development Day, which we currently would have the ability to do that because we do have 181 days of school.
Okay. Anybody have any questions before we vote on the approval of the calendar?
No. And make a motion that we accept the calendar that Dr. Renda has presented tonight?
Thank you. 2nd?
2nd.
Thank you, Erica. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, roll call. Sorry, sorry. I was wondering why Bill was looking at me funny.
He's a lot of paper.
I know, right?
Mrs. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Quinty?
Aye.
Mrs. Reschutz?
Aye.
Ms. Fan?
Aye.
All right, great. So, the last thing for ongoing business is the regional agreement, an update on the 2018 amendments submitted to DUCY. Dr. Renda.
Thank you. So, we're lucky enough to have Mac Reed have some insight poll with the Department of Ed, and was able to get us some answers relatively quick, quickly, about where this was and if it was ever submitted to the state. And it was submitted to the state, and in fact, the state was under the impression that we were going to bring the proposed changes to town meetings in 2018 and 2019. Those changes, as we know, were not brought to town meeting, and what the DUCY can tell us is that our general counsel, Kevin Breznerhand, had let the state know that for some internal reasons, we had decided not to move forward with those changes at that time.
So, do we know if, so, the fact that they thought that we were bringing them to the towns, does that mean they had no issues with what we were changing, or do we even know that?
I don't know that, but, but from the email that Mac has provided, I would imagine they were fine with the changes.
Okay.
But, I would probably want to double-check that with, with DUCY.
Yeah.
But, it, what it seems like is, I don't know what my discussions with the school committee are currently okay with all of these changes.
Right, so, I guess that it would be nice to know if what they, if what we had provided them was acceptable to them. I mean, it may not be what we eventually, you know, bring to towns, but it would be good to know that what they saw was acceptable so that, because there are things that we definitely would keep as changes.
Sure, I think that can be inferred, but I, I don't want to infer.
Right, yeah.
I would like to get an answer. So, what I'll do first is reach out to Mr. Reed and see if, if his conversation wasn't that in-depth. I don't have that with the email that, that he shared.
Right.
And if not, I will, I will either reach back out or ask him to reach back out.
It would just be helpful to know that.
Sure.
Did Mr. Breznerhand say he received a directive from our committee to pull back?
I have not talked to Mr. Breznerhand about this, so I don't know.
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, I have to find out.
I remember the vote to move forward.
Yeah.
I was in the minority, but I remember the vote to move forward, but I, I don't remember any vote saying to not proceed.
All right, yeah.
So, can you, can you pursue and find out at, at what directive that happened?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's probably the COVID directive that everything probably just kind of stalled and... Erica, Joyce, do you have any questions on this latest update about the regional agreement? I think it's an ongoing...
Dr. Renda, we just repeat that. So, the state is at what point now? I mean, we submitted that to them, and they were supposed to say they had any horrible things about it. And so, my understanding is, I don't, didn't understand what you said.
The state's impression was that we were going to take those changes proposed in 2018 and 19 and bring them to each town meeting for approval.
Well, so, our understanding from 2018, the understanding the committee had at that time was that we couldn't go forward until the state said, "Yeah, this looks all legal."
Right.
So, they had changed their perspective of how these things should work. And so, maybe we need to have a procedure as to what we should be doing in the future and not have this mild confusion, because my recollection and the trigger shell is by the state, is that the state had to say, "Yes, this is allowable, you can move forward."
Right. Yeah, I think that's the...
Why we can move forward.
So, in July of 19, the state indicated that for a number of reasons, the district did not move forward with any amendments to the regional agreement during the spring town meetings for that year. So, that's all that the state knows, but I will find out whether or not, if there was a directive to our general counsel to, to pull that back from the state.
Well, what I'm wondering is...
I mean, the state has some procedure for all this, and we don't want to step out of it. You know, so, that was our understanding. Who knows what's happened with COVID and everything else and change in personnel of the state? So, I think there's some clarification here that we need.
It sounds to me like there's a miscommunication or a missing piece of communication from DUCY back to the district to say, "Yes, we're okay with these changes," because it sounds like they assumed we were going to proceed at that town meeting and that we didn't, but we didn't proceed at any town meeting because we didn't know that we had the okay from the state.
Right.
So, it sounds to me like there's just a missing... So it sounds to me like there's just a missing?
Our general counsel might be able to provide that.
Yeah.
That would be my guess.
Yeah, we need to, we need?
So that's Kevin Bresnahan?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just need, we just need the timeline, because, he's saying he's getting a, well, we get the timeline, I'm sure it'll become apparent.
Yeah, and then just a clarification.
We'll figure it out, right.
Sure.
Erica, you all set?
I'm good.
Okay, great. Okay, so policy review report, Mr. Rubruck. I don't know, Erica, if you're prepared or if we're just gonna not, we're gonna table that for tonight. And chairperson's notes, Joyce, did you have something?
Everyone, for being patient with an accident that I had at the end of January, and thank Michelle so much, and Michelle Towne so much for filling in with me and putting up with me. And I am improving. Notice the camera's not on, because I'm still in the neck brace, and maybe for another couple of months, hopefully, it will, weeks, hopefully it's not months. So I wanna thank everybody for stepping up, and particularly Michelle, I gave her a call. She said, Michelle, you have to gather, and she does such an excellent job. So happy spring, everybody, and I will be back.
You have a whole month, Joyce, until our next meeting. Actually, a month and a day now. We gave you an extra day, so May 3rd.
Well, I thought we had another meeting. I'm like, okay, so on that meeting?
Nope, we gave you two weeks, so that you can get even more better.
Well, on May 26th, I go back to the neurologist, and they say yes or no, or maybe, or whatever.
April 26th.
April 26th. I say, that's where my head still is.
I think here's your answer.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Joyce. We're glad you're better enough. I can't speak. We're glad you're feeling better and are with us tonight.
So, Michelle, you wanna carry on, or you want me to pick it up?
I can carry it on, finish it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other topics for discussion not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting?
Well, I got an email out from Mr. Kendall. We have 14 students playing lacrosse.
Oh, Air Shirley students?
Yeah, Air Shirley students.
Boys and girls?
Great.
Yeah, is that boys or girls? Girls. What did you ask?
Assuming boys, but I'm not sure. You said 14 students.
So it's probably boys and girls, because I know there are girls that are?
There are, yeah, there are.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, still, that's fantastic.
Go up at Grotton.
Yeah, excellent. All right, well, thank you for that update. Communications, Jim, since you're sitting at the table, you wanna read the announcements?
I'm up. Monday, April 10th?
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on. It says updated.
Okay.